I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council City, and that's the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item is a public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? Council, please come to the podium. Any none? We'll wait for the regular meeting for a public comment, and we do have a closed session.
Mayor Cabrillas, that's correct. There are three different, or four different agenda items listed on the regular agenda for different closed sessions. The parties and the properties are designated on the agenda. However, in addition to that, you have an addendum item, and we need to go into closed session pursuant to Government Code 54956.9C. However, in addition to that, I would like you to consider adding two additional items on a finding that the need arose after the posting of the agenda, and it was an immediate need. They are both, that would be pursuant to Government Code 54954.2B2. They are both litigation. One would be existing litigation under 54956.9A, and that is the Carter-Burgess litigation. We'd like to brief you on the Carter-Burgess litigation. It is case number RIC 503565, and since there's, the next meeting is probably ceremonial primarily in nature, we do need some direction immediately on this item. In addition, there is the potential for anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9B3A. There is an immediate need to consider some information related to some potential threat in litigation. I need to get some immediate direction on that. So if pursuant to 54954.2B2, you can make a finding and vote to add those two agenda items. We will add those two agenda items as well.
I'll move the finding.
Post in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll move into closed session.
Yes, thank you.
I will reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council City, and that's the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. At this time, we'll have a report from our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Cabrillas. There is no reportable action. We had items listed on the agenda. All of the parties and the litigation was referenced thereon. In addition, the council added two additional items and made all the appropriate findings. However, from all of the closed session, there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the invocation, and that will be delivered by Pastor Ray Jem from the Jubilee Community Church, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our Police Chief, Cliff Reynolds.
Heavenly Father, we declare our trust in you tonight, and we thank you for these leaders of our city that are here tonight. We just pray that you will bless them with wisdom, give them insight, guide every decision that's made tonight, and bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
This is one of the best parts I have in conducting the meetings for the City Council, for the City of Victorville, and that's to recognize our military, men and women who are overseas and in harm's way. It's very special tonight. We have three soldiers that we're recognizing, while their families and friends. And the first one that we have is Christopher Russell Amar. Okay. Okay. And then we have Felix Diaz is going to be accepting the certificate for Christopher. I know he was one of your cadets, and I remember him very well. And if Felix and the family will come forward and receive a certificate. As you can see, for those that don't know the history of this, we do have the banners that are, when the men and women are deployed overseas, then we have a banner made up for them, and we have the banners that are hung on our light standards. And when the soldiers, men and women, return home, then we take down the banners and we present it to the soldiers. In this case, Christopher is overseas deployed, so we're going to give a certificate to the family in recognition of Christopher's service to our country. And again, the city salutes Christopher and thanks you for serving our country, and on behalf of the family, we'll receive this. On behalf of Christopher and Felix, I don't know if you want to say a few words about your former cadet.
Last week, I believe, Mrs. Amar called my home and asked if I would be there, because Russell called from Buck and asked if I would be here to receive the certificate. And what I want to tell you very briefly is, my wife is the Executive Director of Better Way Domestic Violence Shelter, and on one occasion, when Christopher was in seventh grade, that organization had a dance or something, and they asked us to present the colors. Well, when the dance started, Russell came up and asked my wife to dance, a seventh grader. And my wife got up, and she looked at him, and she, right away, she turned to me and she said, Babe, who does he look like? And I said, He looks like the Grasshopper. The Grasshopper is our grandson. He looks just like Russell. So from then on, I called him the Grasshopper. We call our grandson the Hopper. But anyway, he's been, well, all my cadets are very close, very, very close, and you can see, two of them decided to come and accompany today. But I'm so very proud of my cadets. I sometimes get emotional just thinking about it, because they're out there defending our country, and it's just overwhelming. It's overwhelming for me when I see, especially some of my cadets that go in service, and then they always come to my classroom, and they come in their uniforms, and they look so good. They look so good. And at one time, they looked like, you know, like my cadets do right now. They wear a different kind of a uniform. But anyway, I just want to thank the city very much for this opportunity and this honor, Mr. and Mrs. Amar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Felix. And thank the family. Thank you. And again, Felix, thank you for your service to our country, and thank you for continuing your service with the Cadet Corps. Next, we have Jeffrey Williams, United States Army. David Huntsman will be accepting the certificate for Jeffrey. And the family, of course. Again, the certificate is from the City of Victorville, salutes Jeffrey Williams, thanks him for serving our country, and of course, we thank the family and the friends for supporting him, and if we would like to say a few...
I'd just like to thank you all, because this means so much to us, and means a lot to everybody. Before my father died, he told my nephew that he needed to do three things to become a man. It to, one, know God, serve his country, and three, respect his mother. And thank you.
Next, we have Luis Alvarado, United States Army, and Luis has just, actually, we have a banner, but he just got back from Iraq, so welcome home, and we do have the certificate for you, and we'll also have, we're going to let the banner fly for a little bit, and then we'll give it back to you in appropriate time. Luis, thank you for your service on behalf of the City of Victorville, and welcome home.
I'd just like to say a couple of words. I know I don't speak for all the military personnel out there, but this is an experience of a lifetime. I know some parents don't want their kids joining the military, but it's an individual choice. My mom kept pushing me away from the military. I don't know. Tell them not to do it, they'll do it. It doesn't work like that. Everybody makes their own choice. I make this choice. Job that I do is to help all the service members. Job is maintain the, maintain that they're well-being and their health. Not in this manner. I take a lot of pride and pressure in what I do. Thank you all for providing the support to us, Mayor.
And again, welcome home. Thank you very much. The first order of business is our public comment, and the public comment will be for the City Council and also the authorities that it represents. The limit is three minutes. I do have some cards. I have three cards. The first one is Dorothy Miller.
Dorothy Miller, and you all seem to know me very well, because I'm here quite often, and I believe there should be a lot more people here quite often, and know who they voted for, because there's things going on that was illegal, and I mean illegal. Signs being pulled, this is the nastiest voting I've ever seen in my life, that we had signs pulled, we had people doing things that they weren't supposed to, they had it in their packet not to do things, they did it anyway. We have somebody coming on the council that don't care. They're going to do whatever they want to do, and to heck with the people in this city and the people, period. They're going to do their thing, and you're lucky, you're lucky. You're not going to be here to have to put up with that. And the other ones, I'm hoping and praying that you can hold yourself together and not end up with a heart attack over some of the things that's going to happen, because I've seen too much already. That's the main thing I have to speak about, and I think we better really sit back and look at this city. We have no money. We need to get things going in the right direction. Old Town, third time, we're fixing that one up again. What about the city? It's Old Town too now. We're not getting nothing in this city, nothing. Look at Bear Valley Road. I mean, that thing is a disaster. People are going to keep having accidents over there, because the road is so uneven and everything else. And how about Eucalyptus? That still hasn't gone through. We had the money, we don't have the money. Nothing gets done. It's time that somebody steps up to the plate and takes a hold of this situation and get it straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Miller?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I just want to go off of that a little bit more on the elections. Like she said, this is pretty dirty elections, I think. Victorville doesn't compare maybe to Chicago, but it wasn't very good here. And the thing that bothered me most about it is, as she mentioned, my wife mentioned, that there was a packet that was given to all the candidates for the council, and it had rules in it, and one of the rules is that you don't put signs on telephone poles or public poles. And what bothered me about this is the signs went up on a Wednesday. It was reported to code enforcement on Thursday, and I was told that code enforcement told them, the candidate, to take the signs down on Thursday afternoon, and those signs were up there until after the elections. Now, these aren't just political signs in the wrong place, these are political signs that are in an illegal place. And the thing that bothered me about that is, when I asked about it, they said that, well, they give them ten days to take the signs down. When the signs put up there seven days before the election, they're home free. And I'm just wondering if maybe something should be looked into that a little bit closer on your sign ordinances, because I know you have a lot of ordinances in these cities, but what's the point if they're not enforced? So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lieutenant Colonel Felix Diaz.
Good evening. As most of you know, I've been with the Cadet Corps now since 1996, and we have the duty of putting up flags on Seventh Street in Old Town, on the light poles, and those flags were donated to us by the Optimist Club. They were long flags, and we cut them down so that they could fit the poles and so on. In the meantime, we've lost, I think, three light poles, and in some instances, like it happened this last weekend, in several instances, in fact, we do have a van that was provided for us very graciously by the Tatum Family Foundation, and these cones that we have, they're, now we don't even have any cones. We have to borrow the ones from university prep, because rude people run over them. They run over them, and this, just this last Veterans Day, we were taking down the flags, because it happens early in the morning, it happens later in the evening, when we take them down, that people are so rude that they don't care. They just run over our cones, and this one particular time, Wednesday, they dragged our cone all the way to the end of, up to D Street, and then the guy was in a white pickup, and he was dragging it all the way, and then he went back up to Apple Valley and were in that direction, and then one of my cadets had to go out there and face the traffic and grab the cone and bring it back. It puts a lot, it puts my kids in danger, and it's been doing this for, since 1996. And I brought this to the attention of the Police Chief, and at that time, I think this was either Pratt or another one of the police chiefs, and I asked him if we could put a yellow blinking light, an amber light that I have, and he said, No, that's against the law. I said, You can't do that. He said, We'll do you one better. He says, We'll provide you with the Citizens Patrol, that they can accompany you. That worked beautiful for quite a while, and then on a couple of occasions, they failed to meet us, so we had to do it by ourselves. And then one time, we failed to have enough cadets. It was very early in the morning, it was cold, and they didn't show up. So when the Citizens Patrol showed up, they said, Where are the cadets? And I said, They haven't showed up.
Beelzebub, about thirty seconds.
Okay, he said, Well, he says, That's it. We're not going to do it anymore. So since then, we've been doing it by ourselves. My complaint is that this last one is that we lost four flags, and we lost one cone. So I'd like to ask you, what can you do to help us? If you want us to continue putting the flags up? We're more than willing to do it. We've been doing it since 1996, and we'd like to continue, but the way things are going, I don't know. So, anyway.
I'm sure somebody will be to help you, Felix.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Before I proceed, I would like to introduce Jim Kennedy, council member-elect, who'll be sworn in on December the 7th. Jim, will you please stand up? And I don't know if Angela Vias is here. Is Angela here? Angela is also the council member-elect, and both of them will be sworn in on December the 7th. Thank you. We'll start with the agendas. The first one is the Library Board of Trustees, and all we have is the consent calendar and item number three.
Move for approval.
Second.
Item number four is to request to approve the updated library policy manual and collection development manual.
Move for approval.
Second.
Next, we have the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority agenda, and also the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and Councilman Cole will list the chair for both authorities. He'll conduct the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Cabrillas. The only item on the Logistics Rail Authority agenda is the consent calendar. There are no revisions or add-ons. Motion would be in order.
Second.
Airport Authority, we have item three, which is the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Item four is a companion item to RDA item six, Point Powers Financing Authority, number four, Victorville Water District, number four, and City Council, item number six. Mayor Carruthers, do you want me to take all of those at one time?
Yes, please.
Then, instance, it deals with the adoption of the annual city investment policy, and so a motion would be in order as to not only Rail Authority item four, but the companion items, RDA item six, JPFA item four, Victorville Water District, number four, Council item number six.
Moved.
Second.
I need a comment or question. I'm not ready to vote.
Okay.
This is quite an investment, list of new rules and everything that we're kind of incorporating now. It seems like, is there anything, whom am I talking to, Keith or Ru? Any substantive changes to our investment policies? As I perused through it, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me, but there was quite a bit there.
No, there's no significant changes to what you adopted last year around this time. It's an annual adoption, or if we make changes during the fiscal year, we would bring it back, but there was only a few minor changes to the investments, but nothing significant.
All right. Good enough for me. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And item five, request to approve $72,000 for the General Services Provider Agreement with Innovati Federal Strategies LLC. Questions or comments?
Moving.
Not a motion would be in order. Six, proposed resolution number SCLA-A-10-002, which if adopted, would amend the Conflict of Interest Code applicable to designated positions pursuant to the Political Reform Act of 1974 and rescinding SCLA-A Resolution Number 08015. Questions or comments?
Move for approval.
Second.
That concludes Airport Authority agenda. Mayor Cabrillas. Thank you. Next, we have the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. We have no revisions to the agenda. We do have two public hearings. And item number three is the public hearing. Call to hear argument for or against approving the midterm review of the third five-year implementation plan for the Old Town. And at this time, I will open up the public hearing for item three. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item three, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And there is a resolution.
Approval of proposed resolution.
Second.
Number R10007.
Item number four is a public hearing. Public hearing. Call to hear argument for or against entering into an affordable housing agreement for the rehabilitation of the NSP property located at 15430 Culavera Road in Victorville. At this time, I will open up the public hearing for item three. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item three, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And there is a resolution.
Approval of proposed resolution.
Second.
Number R10007.
Item number four is a public hearing. Public hearing. Call to hear argument for or against entering into an affordable housing agreement for the rehabilitation of the NSP property located at 15430 Culavera Road in Victorville. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Hearing none, item number four is closed, and I'll introduce a motion.
Approval of the affordable housing agreement.
Second.
But there was only a few minor changes to the investments, but nothing significant.
All right. Good enough for me. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And item five, request to approve $72,000 for the general services provider agreement with Innovati Federal Strategies LLC. Questions or comments? Not a motion would be in order. Six, proposed resolution number SCLA-A-10-002, which if adopted, would amend the Conflict of Interest Code applicable to designated positions pursuant to the Political Reform Act of 1974 and rescinding SCLA-A Resolution Number 08015. Questions or comments?
Move for approval.
Second.
That concludes the Airport Authority Agenda. Mayor Cabrealis.
Next, we have the Victorville redevelopment agency. We have no revisions to the agenda. We do have two public hearings. And item number three is the public hearing called to hear argument for or against approving the midterm review of the third five-year implementation plan for the Old Town. And at this time, I will open up the public hearing for item three. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item three, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And there is a resolution.
Approval of proposed resolution.
Second.
Item number four is a public hearing. A public hearing called to hear argument for or against entering into an affordable housing agreement for the rehabilitation of the NSP property located at 15430 Culavera Road in Victorville. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Hearing none, item number four is closed. And I'll introduce a motion.
Approval of the affordable housing agreement.
Second.
Probably should have jumped up quicker. I'm sorry. Let me maybe in a more condensed version. The item before you effectively allows us to rehabilitate a property acquired, a multifamily property acquired with NSP money. The construction money to rehab this property also will be largely NSP money, though leveraging a funding source from the county of San Bernardino. Before taking action, I do want to call attention to one particular item in the agreement that I have suggested a revision to the language. Section 301P is language that we will be modifying, and I would entertain your motion to approve subject to staff's revision of 301P to provide a little bit stricter language with respect to the approval of budgets above the budget amount for this particular item.
Well, the spirit of my motion would embrace the suggestions of...
Thank you. Item number five is the consent calendar. Item number six, we took action on that. We'll move to item seven. It's a request to approve amendment number one to the affordable housing agreement with Pacific West Companies, Inc., for the development of a multifamily housing community. And two, approve the subordination agreement subject to final language approval by agency council and to authorize the economic development director to execute related documents.
Move for approval.
Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding VITA tax increment and distribution. Mr. Cox.
Mr. Mayor and Council, there's a very, very, very short staff write-up in regard to this item, but to give some background data, when VITA was formed, there is a radius around the base that includes a portion of the county, primarily in the Orgrand area, Apple Valley, primarily in the northwest area of Apple Valley, a very small portion of Hisperia south of Bear Valley Road, and then the majority of the VITA area is involved with the city of Victorville. Additional background, this was initially started in the county of San Bernardino. There was a CIO of the VITA organization, which was a county employee, and the county kept all the records. And that continued all during the time where all the initial agreements were made, where the original agreements were made, the distribution of the taxes were made. And then at a later time, county decided not to fund that. City Victorville picked up the funding. For those who remember, it was related to multiple lawsuits that Adelantia had filed. The city of Apple... The town of Apple Valley and the city of Hisperia and the county of San Bernardino determined that this should properly be in the city of Victorville, and Victorville should be responsible. And therefore, they picked up the action at that point, expended the money, and moved forward. George Air Force Base, the old George Air Force Base, now SCLA, in the city of Victorville. The... For our clarification, for those who don't follow the real nuances, the air base itself is divided on airport-off-airport properties. And then the redevelopment agency also has off-base properties. And so there's these distinctions that have to be made. The city of Victorville decided that since it had put so much money into the base and because the job generation and the policy of the city council was to replace all the jobs that had been lost as a result of the closure of the base, the council decided to earmark the portion... The majority, if not all, of its funds from the redevelopment area back to the base for capital improvement at the base. The actual requirement of the VITA is that 50% of the tax increment actually goes to the base to be expended on the base, and 50% may be expended within the boundaries of whatever entity the money is raised. In other words, in County Apple Valley or Hisperia, 50% of the money raised as a result of the redevelopment tax is referred back to George Air Force Base for the expenditure of capital improvement and job creation. The other 50% is expended within those communities. Somewhere along the line, it was brought to my attention that Victorville had adopted some kind of a rule or a regulation requiring 100% of the funding from the city of Victorville to be expended at the base. I've researched that. There is no requirement for 100% of the funds to be expended. It just simply turned out to be that the city council, when they expended... When they sold bonds, made a commitment to earmark whatever increment was necessary to repay those bonds. And that has been for some time and will continue to be some time, the VITA tax increment from the city of Victorville. Now, to move ahead, that gives you the background. To move ahead, at a VITA meeting, a recommendation was made by council pro tem to change the formula so that the city would be committed to provide 50% or whatever amount to pay for the bond indebtedness so that it would be in line with the other communities. And Mr. Rothschild at the time said that this was his opinion. It had not been presented to the city council. It wasn't the council opinion, but he would request that it be agendized for discussion. It was agendized, and because of absence of one or more council members, it was determined that it should only be discussed when 100% of the council members were present. And therefore, it was continued two or three different times, as I recall. And the matter is before you at the present time. Now, I have been asked if I had any additional information in regard to what it really means. It is a policy position of the council. The council has pledged whatever percent of the tax increment necessary to pay bond indebtedness. And because of the recession and because of the amount of bonds that have been sold, staff has estimated, and we haven't done an in-depth study, but we have estimated based upon discussion and looking at assessed value and the money we're going to raise, that it would be a number of years before there would be sufficient tax increment that would exceed the amount necessary to pay bonded indebtedness. And I believe I have said... Believe I put it in writing, but I can't recall, that we estimate somewhere between five and seven years at the present time that there would be excess revenues generated, where the council would then make a determination if they wanted to earmark those funds within the VITA area within the city boundary, or if they wanted to return it to the... What we refer to as the base or SCLA for capital improvements. And I have more information if council... I'm available for any questions that the council has, because actually it's a policy position of the board, of the council.
Any questions or comments?
I teed this up, and I think I want to make everybody aware of one thing that Mr. Cox just said, and that is that we have voluntarily set a policy of putting 100% of our RDA... SCLA, RDA money into SCLA and to the exclusion of the rest of the city. The county, Hisperia, and Apple Valley, and Atlanta is out of the picture at the moment because they're trying to get caught up. They just joined the VITA group. They all put 50% directly into SCLA. And then the other 50% must be related to SCLA but within the region of the RDA. We have projects that are coming down the line right now. I can think of certainly Nusqually is teed up immediately, but also you've got the D Street improvements. That's going to be a huge expense into the regional project that's off-base, and yet it's still in the RDA. Another one that comes to mind is the Yacaloma-Green Tree Project. I'll call it that because there's some disputes as to where that might go. But nevertheless, that project is within the VITA/RDA eight-mile circle. And those kind of expenses, this council needs kind of discretion to use that other 50% into those areas. They're all regional efforts. They all point at SCLA. But if our commitment is to put 100% of it in, and it's more or less understood and not brought to the attention of this council and the new council as well, that we do have a discretion to keep 50% back and put it on the projects that are related to SCLA but not immediately embedded within the airport. I think that that needs to be kind of stated at this time, that this is going forward, and it's correct, five, seven, eight years, whatever that number is, before there will be a break-even point where there is a distinction between some real money that can go someplace else other than there. We've got to meet all of our bonding commitments on all of our other... Whether it's land transactions, whether it's library, you name it, all of those projects that we've committed to, we must clean the slate of all of those. But when we come to the end of that list, I ask that we adopt a policy that the rest of the communities... The reason I brought it up is I think the county, Apple Valley, Hisperia, and Atlanta need to understand what is our going-forward policy going to be? Can we count 100% from Victorville? And remember, Victorville is about 70% of the value putting into the VITA project there. Or is Victorville going to use it on Nusqually, D Street, Yacaloma, coming over the railroad track? I mean, there's a number of areas that are big-ticket items in the millions of dollars. This council needs the comfort zone to know that that 50% can be applied there and not at the base out there, we refer to the base out there, SCLA. So that's why I teed this up. And so what I'm... My request to this council as a policy is that direct staff that any new indebtedness, any new bonding is precipitated on a 50% from Victorville going into SCLA and the other 50% retained at the discretion of this council for projects within that same region. Everybody has to, you know, deal with that same relationship nexus. I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, but I did read that Apple Valley applied some of theirs to the Apple Valley Road, being that there is houses that will have people going out to SCLA as a job. So that was a legitimate part of their 50% portion applied to part of their community. I don't know what the county and Hisperia have done with theirs. I haven't seen any accounting, but I know what we've done. We've done 100% into this whole project area. I'm not changing anything except that I allow the discretion of this council to be that the other 50% goes to projects outside of SCLA and not understood by the rest of the agencies that we're going to dedicate 100% into it. And we will meet all commitments. We'll clean the list completely before that 100% ratio changes, because obviously the staff, everybody has made decisions based on an understanding that we had 100%. But the council never challenged the idea. But the next project or the next bond, by the way, we want to retain, pull back half of that bonding and use it into our traffic issues or whatever it is that we're going to do, or infrastructure in terms of sewers and water and what have you that might relate to SCLA. So that's the reason it's on the agenda now. It actually, as I understand it, we really don't need any permission from anybody, from VITA or anybody else. This is a discretionary policy of our own. And so that's why I've teed it up at this time, and I wanted to know what the majority of the folks in this council felt about that.
Eric.
Well, I tend to agree with Councilman Rothschild, and I think it's timely that we revisit the history and for the council to decide which policy directive they want to follow on a go-forward basis. Base closed in 1992, and a few years later, the total operational and financial responsibility for the conversion and rehabilitation of the base fell to the city of Victorville. It was during the worst economic times that we had ever seen up to that point, not unlike some of the problems we're going through today. Victorville, and I think rightfully so, I supported the decision then. I supported it in part on the recommendation of our then-city manager, Mr. Cox, was that because we were so committed to preserving that base as the primary economic engine to generate jobs in the city of Victorville and the entire Victor Valley, we were prepared to commit all of our tax increment revenue for the infrastructure and derivatively of that, the bonds that would be sold periodically to fund that infrastructure. That policy, that public policy debate never envisioned, in my opinion, certainly never was discussed in the context that it was a forever deal. And I think that policy's worked good. You know, we've created a lot of economic wealth on that base, and we've created a lot of jobs on that base because we've been able to sell bonds to jumpstart the infrastructure. And the sale of those bonds in part was premised on the revenue stream associated with 100% of the tax increment revenue from the city going into the repayment of the bonds. But I think Councilman Rothschild's right. That can't and should not go on indefinitely. Knowledge today that next time there needs to be bonds sold, that the calculation of the revenue stream necessary to support those bonds will not be calculated on 100% of Victorville's tax increment, but on 50%, just as it is in Apple Valley, Hisperia, and the county. Then everybody's on notice. I think up to this point, nobody's ever said anything. Everybody's assumed that this was going to go on and on and on and on. And certainly, we can't undo the commitments that we've made through the bond indenture documents, but we can set in motion what our position would be the next time it comes up. And so that is the background. I agree with Councilman Rothschild's suggestion that council policy reflect what it ought
Well, from my perspective and looking at the possibility of this being five, seven years down the road, I almost think that this is an issue that should be taken up at such time as we are in a position or have the need to issue bonds, which, you know, for tax increment purposes, I don't see occurring for some time. So, you know, I don't disagree fundamentally with the idea. I think having that 50% to spend within the city of Victorville and not specifically on SCLA has a lot of merit. I just think it's something that we take up when we get there. And, you know, I mean, we can send that message now, but we're going to have to, if we go to issue a bond, we're going to have to vote on that very issue at that time as well.
I agree with Mr. Councilmember Caldwell and Councilmember Rothschild. I think now's the time to do it. Why wait? It'd have been 50. We needed it 100, and we came forward. Now, I think it's time to bring it back, and we use our share where we need.
I agree that the argument for to keep the same level of commitment as the other agencies for other cities. But we do have a... We have bonds that we have debt service that is predicated on 100%. And I agree, we should probably, in my opinion, I would wait until we clear that up, and then we, you know, we could take up the matter of that policy of doing the 50% for the city. I don't disagree with that. I just think that right now, the way our debt is... Our debt service is predicated on the 100%, that we need to make sure that we maintain that in the credibility that there, that, you know, and the reason we had those bonds issued was because the money was... Or predicated on the tax increment. Do you want to take a vote on it?
I'd move that we adopt a policy that specifically does not interfere with any of the indebtedness and bonding that we have in play, any commitments against that 100% VITA money. We don't touch any of that until the list and decks are cleared completely. And at that point in time, the council's policy, which could change again with another council, by the way, they could go back, "No, let's have Victorville put 100% in." I doubt whether that would happen for future councils, but my motion would be that we put everybody on notice that we have a 50-50 rule, identical going forward after we clean the debt with the county, Apple Valley, Hisperia, and Atlanta, that our 50-50 rule is the same as theirs on the SCLA tax money. That would be my motion.
You're second?
I'll second.
Are you sure?
I move. Okay.
The motion passes.
All this is doing is putting everybody on notice that going in the future, any indebtedness, don't take us for 100%. Take us for the 50%. And let this council decide whether we want to put... We may want to put it in SCLA. Then the council, whatever council sitting up here, will make that decision and put it where... it wherever they want to.
Understood, thank you. Item number nine, I request you adopt resolution number R10-005. Move it.
Second.
No revisions, we do have a consent calendar.
Offer approval?
Second. Item number four, as we have already taken action on that, we'll move to item number five, request to adopt resolution number JPFA 10-003.
Vote for approval?
Second. Next is the agenda for the Water District. We have a consent calendar.
For approval?
Item number four, if we've taken action on item number four, we'll move to item number five, request to approve a change order to the four-con engineering contract. This is an amount of $1,183.46. This is also a companion item to City Council item 17.
Approval?
Second.
Item number six, request to approve a change order to the cash grading contractor contract at SCLA, and this is an amount of $5,466.97, also companion to City Council item number 18.
Approval?
Second.
Item number seven, request to approve change order to the Merrill Metals Corporation contract, SCLA. This is an amount of $7,376, also companion to City Council item 19.
Approval?
Second.
Item number eight is to request you award a purchase order to the Stone Equipment Company for a forklift in the amount of $31,076.40, also companion to City Council item number 20.
Vote for approval?
For approval?
Second.
City Council agenda, no revisions, we have a public hearing. Item number three, the public hearing, call to hear arguments for or against granting a certificate of public convenience and necessity, and I'll open up the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Hearing on, I will close item number three.
第二个
item number four is a public hearing, this is a continued public hearing, is to call to hear argument for or against a proposed municipal code amendment to adopt a development code title 16.
Yes, and we have a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. In early 2006, planning merged with building and code enforcement to form the Development Department. Soon afterward, the department assumed engineering and fire plan check services in order to provide a more efficient and cost-effective service to the development community in the form of a one-stop shop. Since that time, there have been many quick fixes made to the municipal code in order to conduct business until such a time that a comprehensive revision could be prepared that consolidated all duties and procedures of the, I'm sorry, all duties and procedures of the Development Department in an organized and user-friendly fashion. Tonight, we introduce the development code for your consideration. We'll briefly, the following summarize the major changes proposed to the City Municipal Code. Title 16, Development Code Adoption. This new title combines the zoning and building codes, introduces code enforcement and subdivision provisions, updates fire regulations, including residential fire sprinklers in compliance with state law effective January 1, 2011, enables the building official to administrate the fire, the county fire code in regards to development as adopted by this title, introduces the state-mandated green code effective January 1, 2011, adopts the most recent state building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and energy codes also effective January 1. Regarding Title 18, the zoning code, it will repeal Title 18, which will now be incorporated into the new Title 16. Title 15, the building code, will also be repealed and now incorporated into Title 16. Title 8, the fire code, will also be repealed and incorporated into Title 16. It'll eliminate the provisions for a city fire department which are obsolete and/or superseded by state law enforced through county regulations, eliminates the redundant fire prevention and suppression development regulations that were previously included in the building code and are therefore carried over into the development code, eliminates fire suppression benefit assessment, which is obsolete now that we have no fire district, moves cost recovery for emergency police and fire response to Title 3, moves false alarms to Title 3, which is revenue and finance, integrates the fire abatement ordinance with sections 13.32, litter and weed control under Title 13, moves Africanized honeybee abatement to Title 6, health and sanitation. Additionally related sections of the municipal code warranted revision and/or updating as follows. Violation of promise to appear, this section now brings code enforcement fines into compliance with state law. Recently, the city has been reprimanded by the courts several times for failure to update city fines in accordance with the state law. The Procedures of Administration Citation Sections now adds a provision to waive the requirement for warnings and allow for immediate citation issuance under extenuating circumstances. For example, illegal dumping, water theft from hydrants, illegal street vendors, dangerous living conditions. With this provision, those can then be cited onsite immediately rather than having to go through the warning system. Finally, although most of the revisions are formatting, updating, or technical in nature, there are some significant changes to the content, such as it allows the building official appeals to be heard by the planning commission, similar to the zoning administrator currently, increasing the consistency in code interpretation, implementation, and enforcement, and eliminating the need for the now-defunct Building Board of Appeals. It also further streamlines the entitlement process by eliminating city council action on final maps, similar to what we did several years ago, not requiring the tentative maps be brought forward to council, therefore speeding the process. The Subdivision Map Act also allows us to do the same with the final maps. This revision permits qualified staff to approve final maps with city council notification pending approval, so that if there is an issue, it can be brought before the council in accordance with the Subdivision Map Act provisions. As you know, this has been carried over for a month. During that month, there were, there were some recommendations from staff as well as the city manager, and numerous recommendations with the city attorney that have been incorporated in the final product. We believe we've addressed all concerns adequately at this time and are prepared to go forward. Thank you very much. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Cox, Andy Collins?
Mr. Mayor and council, this was brought to my attention to put on the council agenda. I had a lot of discussion with all the department heads in regard to this, kind of a major update. It's very thick, it's very involved, and of course, the questions were, who did it affect? How did it affect them? Did the departments meet? Did they have input? And we have, I think, almost all issues resolved. There have been some amendments in regard to making sure that appeals could go to the planning commission and that eventually they would come to the council if they need to be. It also, it was also pointed out to me that a lot of this quantifies what's actually been an effect for the last two or three years, initially requested by the planning commission approximately three years ago because of complaints of the logjam at City Hall, where people were waiting an inordinate amount of time to get their plans approved, and several changes began to be made in order to get through that logjam and get permits issued for individuals that wanted to, wanted to adopt their plans or get their plans moving forward. I have discussed with all the department heads, I suppose except for the city engineer, I think that all the other individuals have weighed in on this. There is some concern from the city engineer that the state code actually requires the city engineer to provide, to approve certain things, and whether or not that could be given to a registered engineer was a question that I referred to the city attorney. He may want to comment on whether or not it actually requires the designated city engineer as long as it's a registered engineer. But I also indicated that this has been such a long time in the making after discussing with some members of the council, that if it proves to be amendments need to be made, although you don't want to adopt an ordinance and then turn and start making amendments, council has that prerogative, that something in this does not work as anticipated, although as I said before, this has been an effect for some time. It codifies what's actually been occurring to mostly, that those changes could be made if necessary at some future date. So with the fact that the, all the department heads, to my knowledge, have weighed in on this, most of the issues have been resolved with the exception of one or two, I don't think they're major at this point. If we determine as a result of putting this into formal application that there are problems, this can always come back to the council, but at this point in time, I have no recommendation other than the staff is anxious to move ahead. My understanding is the planning commission is anxious to move ahead, and my understanding that this has been in the works for a little over three years and that everyone has had a chance to comment and provide input. So I'm not sure that there's anything could be added at this time.
There is, the issue as to the role of the city engineer and whether that can be delegated. There's unfortunately no dispositive law on the issue. We have researched it thoroughly. Literal interpretation of the code seems to indicate that you could delegate city engineering services to other individuals as long as they were appropriately qualified. That being said, very few cities do do it. The one caution I would have is that it could subject the city to at least legal arguments from developers that we don't have the requisite authority. That being said, again, there's nothing in the code that seems to prevent it directly.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This is a public hearing. I have a card from Jim Tatum.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Jim Tatum, and this is a long time coming. I think that members of the council that was here through the last boom and cycle that we went through.
Jim, yeah, would you put that in?
Last cycle that we went through, you know the problems we had getting our maps approved. We were told by city council people that it'd be nine months, it ended up being two and a half years to get a map approved. And I don't want to have the development community go through that again. This needs to be adopted and moved forward so we can get back on track when the market does open up. We're not starting all over and starting to do it again. You guys are the ones that need to pass it, not the new council. We want you to do it because you're familiar with what happened last time. So my comments were, we'd like the city to take it up tonight and vote on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four? You have an operator, you come to the podium, speak for or against item four. Hearing on, I will close item four and ask for a vote.
I would move.
Excuse me, Mayor Cabral, there is an ordinance, and the title does need to be read on the ordinance. And just for the record, on the dais, you do have additional language that the city attorney's office has recommended be included in the final ordinance. Ordinance number 2266, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville approving Amendment DEV 10-00009, a municipal code amendment to adopt a development code title 16, which incorporates all aspects of the Development Department into one title, introducing and updating regulations, repealing Title 8 Fire Code, Title 15 Building and Safety Code, and Title 18 Zoning Code, and updating various related sections of the municipal code, city of Victorville.
I'll second Joanne Almond's motion. I voted for it, but it's not on the screen.
I know you did. I think you double-clicked on it. I do have it recorded as it is.
And if, Mayor, if I could just correct the record, it's been over four years.
Item number five is a consent calendar.
For approval?
Second.
Item six, we've taken action on that, we'll move to item seven. Presentation, request to approve the dissolution of the building appeals court.
Vote for approval?
Second.
Item number eight is the resolution, request to adopt resolution number 10-083. This is approving acceptance of a $25,000 Healthy City sponsorship, authorizing the director of community services to act as sponsorship official.
Vote for approval?
Second.
Item number nine, request to award a one-year contract to Jay Martinez Landscaping Services for landscape maintenance services for an amount not to exceed $125,000. Almond, do we have a presentation?
Councilmember, Mayor and councilmembers, yes, I do have a brief presentation. As you recall, this item was presented at October 16 meeting, it was continued to today's meeting. This item is to award a contract for not to exceed $125,000 in one-year term for a crew of 10 members for providing landscape maintenance service to the LMAs within the city. I just wanted to take a, take a few minutes and go over what LMAs are and what are we doing in in LMADs, and what is going on in the last, especially last few years that have happened in LMADs. So I have a presentation, and I'll try to be very brief on this. As you can see, the LMADs... The LMADs, what's loosely called LMADs are landscape maintenance assessment districts, also drainage facilities assessment districts, and then MADs, which are maintenance assessment districts, and they normally are small pocket parks within the city. There is over 2 million square feet in landscape maintenance districts right now. This is a map that shows how over the years the maintenance districts have grown into new areas. The city council has a policy to provide landscaping between block walls and sidewalk along arterial roads, and there's normally two ways of maintaining that landscaping, either through an HOA, where homeowners pay and have an HOA that maintains it, or they can join city's assessment districts. We have various assessment districts all throughout the city. We historically had a very small area in landscape maintenance district. We had a contract going back 2001 with Lawn Care. In 2005, the contract was rebated, D and D Landscape was awarded the contract. After a few months, they did not meet their obligations, so that contract was terminated, and there was a letter agreement signed with, or drafted and sent out to Lawn Care. And that letter agreement basically said that they would be providing this maintenance service at a certain rate for as long as the city needs. In 2008, because some of the LMADs did not have sufficient funding, some of the service was reduced as much as 70%, basically in LMADs 1, 2, and 3. Then again, in 2009, March of 2009, city council authorized city manager to terminate all contracts within the city that did not meet the policies of the city. Lawn Care was one of the contracts that did not get terminated. Somehow, it was carried over until September of this year. In March of 2010, another letter went out, and then increased the service area, that increased the level of service in some of the areas. Some of the areas are being brought up to a different level, but they still lack service in quite a bit of areas. In September of 2010, LMADs were transferred from community service to public works, and I'll just go quickly over our contract thresholds. Department directors are allowed to contract up to $10,000. City managers can approve up to $25,000. Anything over 25 must be approved by city council. The contract that we had, or the agreement that we had with Lawn Care was in the amount of $57,000 a month as of September of this year. That exceeded the authority of either the director or the city manager to approve payment. In fact, in last, in October, we brought in two months' worth of approval to the city council. The letter agreement allowed us to cancel the services anytime. We did cancel the service in September. Staff did not have the authority to authorize services beyond September. So that's why you see this new bid, that we went and got bids to provide service for the next few months. We also found that there are several areas within the city that have been landscaped in last few years, but they haven't been transferred into the landscape maintenance effort. That's because most of those areas lie in the new tracks, and either the contractor has not completed the track or completed the improvements to turn them over to the city, or they are in, or they are in an area that will be turned over to the city in the next few months or next year or so. The other thing is, some of the LMADs are in desperate need of major cleanup, major improvements, and we did take some pictures, and we brought some pictures, and I would like to show you some of those. Irrigation issues, we have quite a bit of irrigation issues throughout the LMADs. As you can see, sprinkler head here, sprinkler has a missing head, and because of that, you have landscaping that's starting to die off. And this is the result of having sprinklers that have not been maintained. And again, this is due to the reduction in the, in the level of service that started as far back as 2009. And then we have trees that haven't been pruned for a while, and again, they've started to die, as you can see by this picture. We also have overgrowth in vegetation, and that has led to quite a bit of work that needs to be done. And you can see this vegetation has gone over the block wall. And then, but there's a lot of repair issues that need to be done. Now, we've used some of our Public Works crews, and as you can see, we're doing some of that cleanup effort and repair effort. Again, the contract that we have is for $125,000. It's for, it's for providing maintenance, and it will be to maintain the areas that the city staff bring up to a certain standard. It will take us four to six months to bring all the areas up to a certain standard, so we can put them out to bid. And the other thing is, it takes us four, six, maybe a little over six months to do the repairs that we need in certain areas, so we can have a contractor that can maintain them. Looking forward, we're working with the other departments to make sure that we get all the areas up to the standard that is acceptable. We will be drafting an RFP in conjunction with finance department, and we anticipate that the new contract will be out to bid later on next year, maybe spring of next year, and it'll be, in effect, starting July of 2011, and this would be in line with budgeting for the next fiscal year. In October of this year, when the project, or the contract was brought to the city council, there was a letter passed out by Lawn Care, and it went through some of the issues, and there was also comments made that the city staff was either blackmailing or using tactics that we weren't, that we were not. We have not blackmailed anybody. We haven't harassed anybody. Nothing of that sort has happened in my, by my staff. I have taken some of the highlights of the letter and answered them here, and as you can see, it was, there was question as to if Lawn Care was to work with another company, and that was not so. We were using a different company to do some of the work, especially along Hook Boulevard, and their scope was to trim and maintain areas that were not being maintained by Lawn Care. The Lawn Care was given the opportunity on item number two, they were given the opportunity, once their monthly agreement was properly terminated, they were given the opportunity to bid on the next phase of the maintenance project. And this is, a question was raised, why are we using companies outside of the Victor Valley or Victorville area? And we, staff does not have the ability to stop or award contracts only to the companies in Victorville area. There is a policy that allows a 3% preference, and it's up to $1,000, and we do use that when we look at these contracts. Hourly bidding, there was an issue raised, why we were going through hourly bidding. It's a standard practice. If we cannot define the scope of work, then we get prices based on the hourly rate, and that way we can control the level of service that we will be providing. And then again, the termination of the contract, illegal termination of the contract, well, there was no contract to speak of. We did have a letter agreement, and that was terminated in accordance with the terms of the agreement. City attorney's office reviewed it. We just didn't have the authority to extend it beyond September. And then, again, misleading and threats made by city department, we did not make any threats to anybody in Lawn Care. And then, there was issue raised, is Public Works the right department or qualified department to oversee? This is, this is very common in most cities, public works handles. LMADs, I have previously worked on LMADs. We have staff within my department that have worked on LMADs, are qualified to work on LMADs, and also with the contractor that we are getting is qualified to provide that Again, there was another letter, and we got that letter today around midday, and some of the highlights of that letter I have put in here, there's nothing new in that letter that was brought in today. There is, there was issue raised regarding to the limit of the contract. The limit is within the policies of the city. It does not exceed $125,000. It doesn't exceed one year. It's an hourly rate contract for 10-member crew. That allows us to place them in areas that we, we think they are needed. Previously, Stauffer was awarded, Stauffer was a company that was awarded a contract that was for $25,000, and again, that was within the guidelines of the city contract policies, and they did some work in a couple of different areas. And we did, when we went out to bid previously, we had two contractors that came in with the same dollar amount. One of them did not meet the insurance requirement, so we only assigned, awarded the contract to just one company. And again, the issue was raised, why the other companies aren't being awarded contracts? Well, they were not the lowest bidder in the latest round of RFQs. And Stauffer did, again, answering one of the questions, again, Stauffer did, worked on a different scope. For example, Stauffer was working on doing some trimming, and that was not, that wasn't done for a long time. Within the same area, Lawn Care was doing raking, litter control, and was repairing minor damages. We did send out 31, we did request proposal from 31 different companies. We did get quite a number of proposals, as you can see in the, in the staff report, and we did work with the city's finance department and within the policies of the city council. And once again, there was no contract with Lawn Care that required a 90-day termination clause. The contract that we had was basically a letter agreement, and that letter agreement was terminated with the, within the clauses that were in the agreement. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I do have three cards here. Rebecca Rembach?
For the record, if there's no contract, I would like the city to give our last check to our company, because Public Works has not submitted that and given that, because he, they wanted stuff that was not, that was in the contract that was never existing. It's in the packet that all you have. And too, for the record, a lot of things that were sent on there have a lot of things that disprove that. Emails from them, as well as phone records, that we were threatened and blackmailed, but that goes beyond my point of tonight, because it's just a joke. So I would like to get paid for our last check. It's been past 30 days for September, because we did do the work. But what I am here tonight to say is, I'm here again tonight, I was here a month ago. I brought to the attention the situation of the dismissal of our company, and the inappropriate actions that I do have proof of that took place before and after Public Works took over the LMADs. I'm just curious why this issue hasn't been addressed. We haven't been contacted formally or informally, based on the allegations that took place in September. Allegations of giving the company only nine days of termination after 10 years of working with you. Allegations of the company from off the hill receiving contracts, right from the beginning of September, they got the work. We weren't offered that work. We were just put out of business right there, but Stauffer's was right in there. No other company had that opportunity, and I called a couple of the companies. So I'm just curious why Stauffer's got those three contracts before we even got an opportunity to do the cleanups, the 70% cutbacks that we were told to do, where there was no money, but Stauffer's came in and got those contracts, which I have the emails and the contracts as well to prove. Also, the allegations of the threats, which I have emails from Public Works, and the things that purchasing was saying, and once again, I have those emails, I have proof, so there's allegations here. We're not going away until we're heard and action is taking place. What is done by the city was wrong, and it's very unjustified. Thank you for your time.
Frank Rembach?
Frank Rembach with Lawn Care Landscaping, High Desert. High Desert Gardens, here to talk to you about this LMAD. Caught a little off-guard about what I just saw up on the board there, because some of those pictures was actually trash thrown over the wall by the homeowners, not dead trees. So again, it shows that Pupwell and Public Works aren't really in touch with what's going on with these LMADs. The company that's been doing it for 10 years is in touch with the LMADs, because they're out there every day, including Fridays and Saturdays. Real quick, though, landscaping is a living organism. These plants are alive, and they need care and attention and maintenance, okay? I'm here again to talk about the landscape maintenance district. No one has bothered to contact us, as she says. It's been over a month, and we haven't heard anything until just this presentation right now. Mr. Caldwell put it on, put it on hold for a month, last month when we had the meeting, and it just happened to be pouring rain that night, sir, and everything was coming down. Well, the next day, there should have been crews out there shutting off all the timers, which was not done, because all the timers have to be shuffed manually, they're not hooked up to a computer system. It wasn't done. In fact, they're still running at the same program they've been running at, which means all our landscapes are getting overwatered as we speak right now. And in case no one has lived up here long enough, 90% of the people ruin their landscapes up here by overwatering, and I have proof, and I can show you, after putting in about 1,000 homes, a few million square feet of saw, and 100,000 plants and trees or so. Up in the high desert is not down below in Orange County. So telling me that Public Works should handle everything between wall and wall, and they can take care of it, is not the truth, because I've already been around, and right now, they're pruning, they're actually over-pruning these plants that have to get ready for fall and winter. And anyone who knows up here, if you over-prune and cut these plants back after they've grown out so much, basically, you've either ruined the look of them, or you're going to kill them in about six months to a year, two years. Funny thing about landscaping is, it doesn't tell you your mistakes the next day. It tells you your mistakes in six months, a year, 18 months. And right now, I see Public Works making a lot of mistakes out there. The pictures he showed you are everyday occurrence of broken sprinkler heads, broken pipe. I could, I could take you to every assessment. We know them all. We know where the cleanups need to be done. It will not take three months to do the cleanups. If Public Works would have asked and been upfront with us, you would have had those cleanups done for zero cost.
Rembach, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Again, I would just like to know who is making this decision to take park, to take landscape maintenance out of parks and wrecks, who has knowledgeable people already in place who know what to do, and put it in a department that has no idea what they're doing? And ruining the landscapes, even though they think they're doing a good job, they're literally destroying plants and shrubs as we speak right now, because they're not in tune with how these planters work.
Time's up, please.
Thank you.
Derek Abasi?
Mayor, council members, I'm with Legacy Homes, and we currently have a track over the West Creek area, and our track lines up with the flood control channel. We have a couple of fingers of Passaeos that go through our neighborhood, and I just want to say, in the last month, month and a half, I haven't seen anybody out there doing any maintenance. The Passaeos look terrible. We're out there trying to build homes, trying to sell homes. The more homes we can sell, the better for the neighborhood, the better for the city. And we would just like to request a little help. We would like to request that something be done out there. Plants are dying, and as we approach the winter season, there's really not a whole lot we can do. But like I said, we're trying to sell houses, we're trying to build houses, and we would like to see a little bit more effort out there in the Passaeos and along the flood control channel. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And we have requests to approve a one-year contract to Jay Martinez.
Actually, through, it's not a four-year, Mr. Mayor, it's just through June 30. This is a interim measure that we will go out on an hourly basis for these individuals, and hopefully, we will be prepared to bid this whole thing for the new budget year.
It should be noted that it is a local landscaping business based here in Victorville. Would you entertain a motion?
For approval?
Second.
And Rothschild? Thank you.
Item number 10, request to approve an additional appropriation of $23,000 from the Traffic Safety Fund to cover crossing guard expenditure for fiscal year 2010, 2011.
Item number ten, request to approve an additional appropriation of $23,000 from the Traffic Safety Fund, uh, to cover crossing guard expenditure for fiscal year 2010, 2011.
Item McLovin, it's a request to award, uh, contract to Duncan Engineering for $88,842.99. Also an additional appropriation of seventy, $7,502.2 and a rehabilitation program grant in the amount of eighty-four thousand, uh, that's what'll be used, a grant in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and three dollars.
Approval?
Second.
Number Almond, may I get a vote? Thank you.
Item twelve, request to amend the service provider agreement with Parsons, Brickenhoff, Quaid and Douglas. Uh, it's additional or added assigned task not to exceed $239,538.
Approval?
Second.
Item thirteen, request to ratify the expenditure plan for the 2010, 2011 supplemental law enforcement services fund.
Approval? Second.
Fourteen, request to accept the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Seneca Road and Sparrow Road to Woodland Tribe Project.
For approval?
Now fifteen, request to accept the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Word of Road, Richcrest Road to Tammerus Road Project.
Second.
Item sixteen, request to approve amendment, amendment number one to professional services in agreement with Woodward and Coran.
Approval? Second.
We've taken action on item seventeen through twenty, up to twenty-one. Request to adopt resolution number ten dash zero six eight.
Vote for approval.
Second. Number Almond? Thank you.
Item twenty-two, it's a request to adopt resolution number ten dash zero eight four. And do you have any comments?
Yeah, I read the, the write-up on this, business-friendly principles and before we get into bed with SCAG with a group hug here and everything for all the local communities. I'm, I'm always suspicious when these regional bodies want to just get together with all of us and, and make sure we're looking, not looking over our shoulder at, uh, what they might be securing or the decision-making, taking it away from us and securing it at a more regional level. Uh, if they really want to make, you know, SCAG could be a very influential body, uh, to the legislature. Obviously, a lot of those folks come out of the Los Angeles area, but I mean, if they want to make it business-friendly, here's some, some thoughts I'd like to see in a, in a, a letter or at least, uh, somebody that said repeal the prevailing wage, that would be a good one for SCAG to lobby for. Uh, remember, they're, they're involved in all these projects in the state here and everything else. Uh, why not repeal that? That adds twenty percent to almost any project the taxpayers are paying for. Uh, repeal of AB thirty-two. I know that the voters, um, I know their infinite wisdom decided that, uh, that was a good thing to do, it's destroying businesses, but nevertheless, if the SCAG wanted to do the right thing, they could, uh, lobby to repeal AB thirty-two. Uh, and also tort reform. I noticed that Texas is doing an interesting one, uh, they've got a predominantly Republican legislature and governor now, and they have one where you lose in the, in the court case, you pay. You lose, you pay. In this state, you lose, we still pay. I mean, this is the most asinine, uh, state in the universe. Uh, anybody can sue us and they're personally, they're pretty much insulated from any responsibilities or legal fees. Uh, but in Texas now, they're going to have one where you lose the case, you pay. There's nothing wrong with that. It puts everybody on notice, including the ACLU, uh, that if you're running around suing everybody on every asinine little thing for, uh, in protection of the taxpayers, uh, and you lose, then you pay the taxpayers back, because we put a lot of resources into defending ourselves against a lot of frivolous lawsuits, not just the city of Victorville, every city in this state. Uh, so if SCAG wants to do something, uh, about making it a more business-friendly, there was three ideas that I would tee up right there. I know there'd be a lot of pushback on thirty-two, but nevertheless, uh, those are three of them that I'd like to see, uh, taken down there. I wouldn't go down there, but maybe Mr. McEckern would be heading down in that direction and that would be three things that he might pop over the fence and see what the, how some of them take those things and then any others as well. So that was some comments before I go ahead and say, yeah, sure, go ahead. There's nothing that's really insidious built into the language here. If they want to be business-friendly, it's just a matter of how they go about doing this, it might just be a lot of rhetoric or it might be something that could actually have some substance to it.
Uh, well, I'd be more than happy to take those, uh, those comments down. I actually just was recently appointed by Sandbag to be on our transportation committee down at, at SCAG and, um, I just attended my first meeting, uh, not two weeks ago, so, um, just kind of getting to know that organization a little bit better. Um, I think, I think a lot of what you said, Mike, has merit. I doubt we'll get anywhere on AB thirty-two, like I'd agree with you there, but, um, but there are, uh, obviously some things that SCAG could be doing, um, and having more of a say in. Uh, you know, just for instance, high-speed rail and where the first corridor is going to be built, a train from somewhere to nowhere just doesn't make any sense and, uh, I'm not sure exactly what, uh, you know, I think SCAG should have had more of a role in determining where that first leg went, but for whatever reason, the High Speed Rail Authority decided to put that money up in central California where it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so. I agree. But with that, I, I would still like to see us adopt, uh, the business-friendly principles that SCAG's asked us to. I think, uh, there's a lot of merit to that and would hope that, uh, we all take that into account as, as we do our jobs every day.
Eric?
Well, I'm always leery of expanding regional government. My experience with SCAG, and I sat on SCAG for a while, that it's dominated by the urban core to almost exclusion of interests from empire and specifically the high desert. I'm glad that Councilman McAcorin is willing to invest the time and energy to go down and be our representative, but my experience is that if it's a issue or a request from the high desert, it gets little or no attention. That's one of the reasons why I basically am not a fan of regional government and especially one that ends up with the kind of authority that SCAG has over local decision-making. I hope that vigilant, protecting, uh, the high desert and specifically Victorville's best interest, because SCAG, in my opinion, if they could do away with local government and run Southern California, they would.
I think we are business-friendly. Haven't been.
Item twenty-two, it's a request to adopt resolution number ten dash zero eight four.
I clicked it.
Item, uh, number twenty-three, it's a request to approve an expenditure in the amount of $40,777.50 for the installation of diesel particulate, uh, filters on, on three vehicles to meet California emission standards, again, these nice regulations that we have to comply with.
By the way, we just spent a hundred and fifty thousand on vehicles just not too many months back. Here's some more. This is regulations that are unnecessary, totally unnecessary, except the state regulates down, this is, this is the effects of AB thirty-two. Every community across the state is doing this. Uh, the millions of dollars that are going into such a useless regulation, uh, and controls are, are crazy. Uh, best available technology was a rule before, uh, this was implemented, this AB thirty-two is implemented, there's nothing wrong with that. Whatever is the best stuff out there, when you build your new equipment or put your new car on the road, that's what you put down. Best available technology went away. Uh, that went away and so now we've got, uh, the most we can squeeze out of the business communities and most of them are leaving it. So this is some more of the cities are paying and private sector's doing the same. I can hardly bring myself, I know we gotta pay this. All right, after, having said that, here's my, that's my qualifier, we gotta pay it or the state comes down and says you can't drive your truck. So that's, that's the, the backside of that is it's, you have to comply. But it's wrong and can be changed. And SCAG could do that, they could lobby for that.
Before we go to item number twenty-four, which is our last one, I would like to have like a five-minute recess and take a little break. And, uh, Doug?
Um, Doug, you have to say this, yeah?
Yes, Doug, Doug will handle this, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, the, uh, Public Works Department had sent out RFPs. Uh, we received RFPs back and the council, designated council committee interviewed, uh, the top three candidates. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, clarifying some information so that we can compare each of the three apples to apples to apples. Um, unfortunately, we probably need another week or so to do that comparison, so we are going to request that this item be put off, um, probably for two weeks. Uh, Ms. Bates will be in touch with all of you to find out your availability for, uh, possibly a November thirtieth, um, council meeting, uh, special council meeting to, uh, consider, uh, the proposals that, that come in during that timeframe.
Questions? Okay. Item twenty-five, presentation, report from council members, and I would like to extend the opportunity to, to outgoing, uh, council members of the city of Victorville who devoted, Terry's case, many, many years, over thirty years, thirty-five years, I guess, to the council. And Joanne, you've also, uh, put your share in there and, and given the opportunity, I'll start with Joanne, uh, to give the opportunity to save your words.
I can't believe I've been here sixteen years. I'm not gonna cry. This has been the most interesting and exciting sixteen years, very educational. And like Terry just said, some things we wish we didn't know, that, that, um, I really enjoyed myself, enjoyed helping the community. And mainly, the, the reason, um, I became a council member was to be there for the constituents. And I think I've done that a couple times. I know we just finished a, um, bus stop for the handicap at Gold West Mobile Home and, um, Amherst left already, but, uh, they called and thanked us and said the city did it in less than thirty days. And that was really, really wonderful. It's just things like that that, um, make me feel real good. And I, most of all, will miss the staff. Awful lot of laughs. I'm not gonna look there. I'll miss my family here, damn it. These people have become my second family. And, um, I'll miss them all. But like Terry said, every time we hear something's gonna be raised, any fee or tax, you'll see Terry and myself in the back. And when, and we will fill out a white card. Yes. In fact, we might take some home and be ready. But I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, for being here this long. And, uh, I'll miss you all.
Thank you.
Well, Joanne and I joked several times tonight about the fact that we're gonna keep our eye on all you rascals and if it looks important, we'll be sitting in the front row. I think that Joanne and I are gonna see if we can hire Norman Dorothy Miller to train us how to fill out the white cards and to timely come up to the podium and make succinct comments, uh, to the council. Like Joanne says, you know, this has been, uh, a huge experience, uh, in my case, over forty years. I've been on the council since, I think, March nineteen seventy-two and I was on the Planning Commission for three years before that. You know, it's funny how times change and, and people become far more rigid and formal. I was the chairman of the Planning Commission throughout most of my time, almost the entire three years. With the exception of the first three meetings I went to, I was the chairman the whole time. And one year of that, the whole year of nineteen seventy, I was in Kingston, Jamaica, running the telephone company down there. I resigned from the Planning Commission and they would not accept my resignation. So, but you can't get away with those kinds of things today. But I, it, it, it has been a wonderful opportunity and, and I wouldn't trade any of it. Uh, I don't know to what extent I may ever get the opportunity to address the senior staff again. I, I, I want the senior staff to know that I think that I have been involved in the selection process of every department head that has worked in this city since nineteen seventy-four. Look out at the faces that have been, uh, the, the worker bees in this city, the ones who try as best they can to carry out the public policy directives and decisions that are made by this council. And, uh, I see a team of professionals, I see a team of dedicated people, uh, not just to their, their profession or their discipline, but to what's in the best interests of the city. I've said it before, it's, it's easy to come to these meetings on Tuesday night and make decisions, but the five of us that sit up here are not the ones that implement those decisions. Whether the decisions are good, bad, or indifferent, the people who make it happen are the department heads and the people that report to them. And I want you to know that I'm proud to have been a part of the process of selecting you and a part of the process of working with you all these years. There are some who have said that this is a dysfunctional organization. I do not buy that for one minute. This organization is a sound organization, it has a great future, it has a tremendous amount of opportunity and challenge. And I know that each of the members of the senior staff, under the leadership of Mr. Cox and the incoming council, will do everything they can to continue to move this city forward in a positive and progressive way. To the extent that in any kind of an informal or ad hoc basis, I can never be of assistance to any of you individually or collectively, I don't want you to hesitate to pick up the phone and call. These are tough times. There are those in the media who choose to beat up the city of Victorville as though we- we were the only municipality in Southern California that has suffered severe financial strain. Simply is not true. We're suffering just like everybody else, we've made sacrifices just like everybody else, we've made adjustments just like everybody else, and we'll get through this just like everybody else, as long as we have dedicated professionals like each and every one of you as department heads of this city. I doff my imaginary hat to you, I thank you for the opportunity to work with you, and I look forward to you guys doing great things to move this city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Terry and Joanne for your service, for, Terry, for the forty years, and Joanne for the sixteen years. And, um, you know, I've been in the city for thirty-four years, I guess, now since nineteen seventy-six, and I've, as, as the fire chief, it was my pleasure to work for, for the councils that we've had during those, those years. And after I retired, when I, uh, came on the council, I was very honored to serve with people of honor and integrity, and I agree, uh, regardless of what the papers say or individuals are out there saying, uh, we have a great city, it's always been great. We have some, we have a little downturn like everybody else, look at our country, you know, but we're gonna get out of this, and we're gonna be a lot better for what we learn, we're gonna be wiser too. Uh, but again, I, I'm very proud to have served with, uh, an honorable lady like Joanne and honorable person, a man like, uh, Terry, so I wish you the best in, in your endeavors, and, uh, you are the family, and we have been a family for a few years together, so, anyway, thank you very much.
I'll just echo your comments and thank both of you for all your years of service to the city, and, uh, I'm sure you won't go away quietly.
Get your question way up.
And I, I thought I heard for all the employees that, uh, Terry is giving free legal, uh, advice based upon, yeah, based upon his comment. Sounds like it's free.
Well, for this group of rascals, it might be.
I've, um, been in the trenches here with everybody else, and the one thing I wanna comment, and I'll take a little bit slightly different twist on this thing, is, uh, Joanne and Rudy with his fire chief and, and city council tenure, and Terry with almost forty years on this council and the planning commission. I've been on twenty-four years. The four of us have sat through an incredible transition with the BRAC closure and the base closure of George Air Force Base. Uh, that redevelopment agency out there is one of, geographically, one of the largest in, in California, and the things that are going on today there, in spite of the base closure, are incredible. Over three thousand permanent jobs in the federal prison, some people forget there's almost a thousand jobs associated with that, was one of our first captures before, as we got going. But this council went through all of those different transitions, and that, that moment in time seemed just as bad as today. Uh, we came out of the base closure at Battle of Atlanta for a few years, and this council stood together and, uh, recognized the value of the job production that will go on at SCLA into the future. And the platform there and now is incredible. Uh, the, the, uh, power plant number one has generated over forty million dollars alone into the local community just in their existence, all by themselves. Remember, that money is going to the school districts and the Mojave Water Agency as well as the city. So, but, that type of revenue is going to continue because we had a council that sat here with a long tenure to it. You didn't see too many changes until just recently. And so, as, as everything happens, uh, new people are coming on board, uh, they may lose a little touch of the history, but they're gonna appreciate that we've got something here rather unique, uh, that the rest of the Southern California region can't claim, and I, very unique. And I've said before, and I still believe, that we will be one of the first spots in Southern California to begin to emerge out of this, uh, doldrum. The housing industry is one of the big crippling spots that affects our, our, our revenue source for the redevelopment agency, uh, but that will turn around too, as, as like everything else. Uh, so, for both of you that have hung in there and, and made all those decisions and tough decisions, and, and taking the spears that we've had from everybody, and a lot of people with good intentions, but a lot, a lot of knowledge of what, what went on behind those decisions, thank both of you. Love you both, and this is a second family for all of us that have been here for more than five minutes, uh, the staff and everybody else. It's an incredible relationship you have away from your real family and, and everything else. This is it, so, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, item twenty-six, are there any, uh, agenda items for upcoming city council meetings that anyone wants to bring up? You're done?
We're gonna, Mr. Mayor, we'll notify, um, the council on arranging this, uh, special meeting as soon as we possibly can. And, uh, we, we had about five minutes of an executive session that we need, but it will be continued to the next meeting. And so, as the Councilman Caldwell and John Almond sitting last official meeting, uh, from administrative staff, the city employees, thank you for your years of service.
My pleasure.